Okay, seeing as we have a forum, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order at six thirty one. We'll get started with roll call.
All right, Director Ahuja. President, Director Bajaj.
President.
Director Racy.
President.
And Director Woslawski.
President.
Okay, great, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Kenny, if you'd like to share anything?
Hope you guys are doing well. I hope everybody voted and to stay safe, wear masks if you need to. Okay, take care.
Thank you. All right, great. We'll move on to consent items. We have five items. If anyone wants to make a motion to approve all of the consent items, we'll entertain that.
I can make a motion.
Okay, great. Do we have a second?
I'll second, hoping that we get to see the the rest of a resolution six oh six oh nine oh twenty two A. Since we saw only maybe about the first fifty percent, so we see the rest of it.
That one's later in the agenda.
Oh, it is? Oh, I'm sorry. But then we're consenting. Hmm, we adopt a resolution, but we'll look at it later. Okay.
No, no, all of these are in the agenda.
You're right. I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, no exceptions then. I uh, I second, there was five items, sorry. Uh, I did.
No.
Did ever. I did have a correction to the check registered. There was one payment to a board officers that should have been voided. And I made Kevin aware of it, and he said that Sunny was aware of it as a typo. So I'll see, we'll see a correction next month, I assume, in our accounting.
Um, it it wasn't a typo, it just wasn't recorded yet. So the the check was voided. But it wasn't recorded until the bank statements got reconciled.
Gotcha.
Okay, great. So we have a motion on the floor from Director Ahuja. And a second from Director Woslawski. We can go ahead and vote on the motion to approve the consent items now.
Are we doing roll call?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, Director Ahuja.
Yes.
All right, Director Bajaj.
Yes.
Director Racy.
Yes.
And Director Woslawski.
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome. So we passed our consent items. We'll go ahead and move on to item four. Um, starting with four A, the Board of Directors Elections. Kevin, if you want to just take it away.
Uh, great, yes. So that's, um, I. Uh, great. So this is a resolution zero six zero nine twenty twenty two B. For some reason, it was excluded from the agenda. This is what it is right here. I'll go ahead and read it out loud so you can hear it. Whereas a biannual district general election has been ordered to be held on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty two. In the Rancho Rincana, not a recreation park district of Santa Clara County for the purpose of electing two for your term. Board member, uh, board of direct dis- oh. Board directors of the district. And whereas pursuant to part three of the elections code, such elections may be either completely or partially consolidated. Uh, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Directors of the Rancho Rincana Recreation Park District. Um, so what this means is, uh, because we have two seats. That are open enough for election, we can hold it as a standalone election, or we can consolidate it with the rest of the elections. Section one, the Board of Directors of the Rancho Rincana Recreation Park District calls for an election to be held on November eighth pursuant to sections ten four oh three of the elections code of the state of California. Request the County of Santa Clara Board of Directors, uh, Supervisors to completely consolidate the election with the statewide election. That the Board of the RRRPD requests the Board of Supervisors of Santa Clara County to hold and conduct the election in a manner prescribed in the election code. Uh, section three. Um, the elections are at large, so sometimes, uh, the other potential is to do it by district. Or there's a name for it, but it's like a certain region, but we're so small, there's only one, one area anyway, so we do that large. Um, section four is the qualifications. Uh, for us, the qualification is to be a registered voter living within the boundaries of the Rancho Rincana Recreation Park District. Unless you've been grandfathered in. Um, and that's an actual government code. Uh, section five. Uh, let's see here, and of course, we will reimburse the, um, county friendly costs associated with holding the elections. Section six is about, uh, how many words are are in each, um. Other statements of qualifications, if, uh, you know, the candidates choose to actually do that. Uh, section seven. It's about boundaries. Section eight. Um, is how ties will be handled. And then section nine is whose term is up. So at this point, it'll actually be Director Woslawski's last term. Sad face. And then, um, Misha took on a two-year, uh, term. So her her term will be up. And hopefully, uh, Director Racy will be running again. And that's the end of the resolution. Does anyone have any questions about that?
So does this mean that, I'm assuming this would go into effect for? This election, correct? Okay. Um, and so does that mean that it basically gets rid of the two-year option?
Oh, no. So, um. The the basics of this is that, um. We have to hold elections every two years, right? And we always have the option of doing it ourselves, or running an election separate from any other election. Um, this would cost somewhere between upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do. So as a second option, instead of doing it ourselves, we say, hey, there's another election happening in November anyway. Why don't we just add our names onto those lists? Does that make sense? That's the only thing that's happened.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, um, let me see. And I think that's, that's about it. So at the end of the day, all it does is saves a whole bunch of money. And that's about it.
Is there a possibility that there might be a third seat open?
Uh, not that we have confirmed yet.
Okay.
Um, but if that were to happen, this would be a good time to have that on there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, um, well.
Moved your adoption of the, uh, resolution.
Okay, do we, do we have a second?
It's a second.
Okay, great. Um, we'll go ahead and move forward with a roll call though.
All right, Director Ahuja.
Yes.
Director Bajaj.
Yes.
Director Racy.
Yes.
Director Woslawski.
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome. Great. So we will go ahead and move on to the next item.
Great. Uh, so since we have, uh, two seats open, um, for reelection or election or reelection. Um, we should also start marketing for the positions, only because we're a very, very, very small district. And so it's very difficult to find candidates to, uh, apply. So, um, in twenty twenty, I think we did a few workshops which were very helpful, uh, and would help any, um, interested. Rancho residents find out more about the position, and then also how to navigate the election process, how to apply things like that. Because it isn't super intuitive how to apply. Um, and I think this would be really helpful. I was thinking maybe two workshop dates, perhaps one on a weekday. During the day, maybe one in the evening, uh, and that way people could make whichever one's more convenient for their schedule. And what's really helpful is to have, uh, at least one, or but two would be preferable, uh, directors to come and, you know, talk a little bit about the position. So, and then of course, depending on who it is, we could finalize the dates, send out mailers and talk about it on Nextdoor, uh, so that way people can kind of find out. Is there anyone who's interested in volunteering? All right, we have the chair.
I guess I should be interested in volunteering.
All right, we have a second volunteer. Okay. Um, if you want, uh, we could finalize the dates offline, uh, and that way just save a little bit of time, uh, and then, uh, we'll get the mailers sent out.
Yeah, I wanted to say I can, I can volunteer as well.
Oh, okay. Um. Okay. So I can only have two. So what I'll do is, um, we'll, we'll work out dates and maybe, uh, one person could do two workshops, one person could do. Two board members could do one workshop each, something like that. Does that sound good?
Yeah, maybe that'll work out. You think that's really gonna be enough having two of those? I mean, I, I thought the idea was hopefully all four of us would volunteer and that would be, you know, I don't know, eight or six, something like that.
Well, we we did two in twenty twenty and we ended up with four, four board members. So hopefully we'll be as, uh, as successful as we were back then.
Hopefully.
Yep. And I think, um, people can start applying July eighteenth. So it's, uh, we still have a little bit of time. To, um, uh, get those workshops started.
Another question is, I've forgotten, um, what what the, um. Uh, the file date is for November election, since it. It hasn't come up in a while. You know, you have to get all your paperwork in.
Right.
It's due.
Let me see.
It was August twelfth.
It was August something, I remember.
Some around that time, mid-August.
I'm thinking more end of this, because I had actually moved here mid-August, and it gave me a very short time to get it done.
Let me see, I think I just looked this up too. I think I still have the dates, I believe.
It's just whatever is a day before Election Day.
Uh, July eighteenth through August twelfth this year. So, um, it's, it's actually a number of days before Election Day, so it changes a little bit year to year.
Right. So I guess these, um, open, these, uh, meetings need to take place before, let's say, July eighteenth or, you know, definitely August twelfth, but, you know.
Right. At least. I think sometime in July is fine, even if, um, even if it's already started, uh, you know, people still have several weeks to, you know, apply.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully. Um, anyway, I will reach out to all the volunteers and, uh, set some dates. Uh, I still, there's a little bit of a problem with our website right now. Um, so I'll have to get that sorted out before we send out the mailers, or I can change some things in the mailers, but that's fine.
Okay, um, so I guess if the finalizing dates and assigning volunteers would happen offline, I'm I'm assuming we don't need a motion? No, okay, great, then we can move on. Um, that's that for our discussion and action items, and we'll just move on to information and discussion. Starting with the General Managers' Report.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, so this is, um. This is actually the, the last month with the unplanned closures before it resets. Um, so now that we've seen a full year of this, you can kind of get an idea of how many, um, hours of closure we have, uh, in a year. Um, I think in other years, the smoke can be kind of bad, that can lead to a lot of downtime, but it looks like, um, this fiscal year has been very good for that. Um, for the work plan, we've got board orientation that's still a bit late. We have a board member who has not done their training. Um, our policies, if they are on time, as of right now, our site master plan, uh, is slipping a little bit. Uh, in in the timeline, summer registration is a little bit late at this point, um, and, uh, summer finals planning is complete. So, um, something to be aware of is that we do have, uh, low summer registrations right now. We kind of capped the number that could be registered. Uh, as a result of severe staffing issues. Um, we didn't open it up until very recently, so we'll see what happens. Um, and I think this year, unlike other years, uh, yes.
Yeah, can you give us some idea what you mean by severe?
Yeah. So in a normal year, we could have about eighty, uh, staff numbers. Um, and this year we have maybe about sixty, and most, almost all of them are new. Um, so what's happening right now is that we didn't actually recruit in twenty twenty. And so, um, we're kind of seeing a cliff where where that, that there's a bunch of old staff who've left. And the ones that would have come in in twenty twenty and come back twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two aren't there. So, um, this is the year that we're paying for what happened, uh, several years ago. Uh, and in addition to that, of course, there's some inflationary pressures, changes in in, um, employment, demand everywhere for for staff, so. Um, you know, there, there are pools, in fact, that are closed over the summer as a result of the staffing shortage. So. Um, but to give you an idea, normally in a summer, we would max out at twelve instructors at a given time in water. Last year, I think we did, um, between six and nine, but that was because of COVID. Uh, we didn't want to open up and increase capacities. This year, um, we're between six to eight, and that's primarily because of staffing at this point. So, and the six to eight that we've registered, we're still racing to recruit in order to make sure that we have enough, uh, instructors to fill that. So it's, it's a bit of a scary situation. Normally. In a normal year, we do several rounds of hiring. We do one round early in the spring, we train them in April, and then they start in May. We do one round, the big round, in May and early June, and they start in June. And then we do another one in July, and those ones start in early August. But this year, what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to be continually recruiting and training. And, um, that poses a different challenge, because when you have a group of them, you can train a group of people at the same time, five, eight, ten, whatever it is. Um, usually it's not ten, uh, except for one of them. Uh, but this year, we may have one or two trickling in that we just have to train one at a time. So it will be an inefficient process, but that's where we are. Um, any question, any other questions on that one? Okay, so, um. It's too early to know what's going to happen with summer registration. Um, if we, if we continue to be capped with our registration, then our revenue will be. Down quite a bit. Um, but if we continue to do good recruitment, we might meet last year's revenue or maybe slightly exceed it. Um, I think that's probably the more likely scenario is that we'll be about the same as last year. Um, but it's too early to tell. Okay.
Have you heard about the mask mandate at all? Alameda County brought it back.
Yes, yeah, we actually never, uh, changed our mask, uh, indoor mask mandate, so we've, it doesn't affect us. We're, we're ready for this. So, um, so we've been masking indoor the whole time, and then outdoor section, we're pretty much spaced apart enough that it's okay. And we'll likely have the face shields for instructors. All right, uh, so our summer training weekend is this weekend. Please reach out. Let's do that tour. I want to show you the facility. Um, so, uh, go ahead and reach out. We'll do a tour, uh, maybe one or two at a time. You can see, um, how we do things and, um. And you can also, um, meet some of the key staff as well.
What hours?
Um, the hours, uh, on Saturday. Probably after four. The first three hours are sexual harassment training for managers and then for, uh, staff. This is gonna be after four on Saturday, and then Sunday, there's a catch-up one. Early on, but it'll also probably be about, uh, two to six-ish. Those are kind of like the windows, um, so we could schedule any, any time in there.
I'm ready.
Let's see here, um, site master plan, um, we'll talk about that a little bit more, uh, in a little bit. And of course, we have our insurance renewal. Um, our property insurance was that one million, which is, uh, not enough to really replace much of the facility, so doubled that to two million. Uh, probably not enough for full replacement, but it's a lot closer than before. Um, and of course, we're looking into alternatives for workers' compensation other than state fund. Uh, and another thing that we might need to look at at some point is cyber insurance, uh, given that we may be taking electronic payments soon, and a lot of our. A lot of everything we do is online now, so there's just potential for, um, all kinds of mayhem. Uh, but no word on that yet. Yeah.
Good question for you. So, um, I really don't know how the commercial insurance works. Where does the insurance, we have not covered the heat pump and stuff we use in the pool?
Uh, the limits on, uh, equipment, I think it's eighty thousand, but there's like a, um. There's a deductible that's a little bit high. Uh, and I think that's more, it's usually better just to replace it ourselves. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like, like if you have your car, you insure it, and it breaks down, you wouldn't do a claim for your car insurance, you know?
Hmm. Unless I gotta replace it.
Right, so, um, I think that's more for like damage, things that get damaged from accidents as opposed to just breaking down.
Yes, because I, it, I popped up in my head because my home in Fremont, I had to recently replace the stove. And because the insurance wasn't doing it fast enough, and my tenants needed it, I had it replaced. But then I filed the insurance claim and they just cashed it out.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so that is something we should look at and find out about, because if you're insured, and if it ensures equipment, the heat pump and all of that should be insured too. Even if I get it done outside, it, we should be able to file a claim for it.
Yeah, I think that's, um, that might be a different kind of insurance.
Uh, that, that's what, I don't know how the difference between the commercial versus non-commercial insurance.
Gotcha, yeah. Um, definitely, I can look into that, uh, just in case. All right, uh, any other questions there? That's pretty much the end of the report.
I mean, we looked at, um, the, uh, CSDA. Insurance for, um, workman's comp, I think, and you had to buy into that. Uh, back then, it didn't seem like it was cost-effective. It looked like the state, um. Program was a, a better deal, but I don't know what the state is today. She ma- she made a good point in that, you're right. I've never thought of it before, but the, uh, uh. Uh, it's not homeowners insurance, it's commercial insurance, and so our limits would be, uh, very different, I think, so. And she's got a point. What if? Uh, we, we carry, we fix most things like, uh, pool, pool pumps and, and heaters and stuff as normal expenses, you know? And the same would be true if our, uh, if our, um, uh, stove went out, you know? So I'm not sure, um. What's appropriate other than, uh, let's say, you know, if it burns down, I agree, right? If it burnt to the ground, then it would cost at least two million to replace it, you know? So, so we are probably underinsured on that, so. Anyway. But we're all speculating, so it's not very productive. We need to look into more. I, I, I'm, I'm glad you noticed that. But I, I think we're still in, in danger of being underinsured. So that's all I have to say.
Right, uh, if there's no other comments, then we can go ahead and move on to five B.
All right, great. So, uh, this is about the California Association of Recreation and Park Districts, uh, conference, which I attended, uh, last month. Um, you guys approved it. Thank you for approving me to go. Uh, I was approved for a scholarship, so, uh, the room. Uh, and board meals, uh, most of the meals, and then also the, um, the, uh. The room, anyway, almost all of it was paid for, which is great. Um. Anyway, uh, there was about forty rec and park districts there. Uh, it was really nice. Most of the other attendees were either board members. Or general managers and a few vendors as well. And there was two members of the California House Reps and at least one county supervisor. Uh, so that was, uh, that's quite interesting. Um, but what really surprised me was that there was actually a lot of small park districts, and this is very refreshing. Um, the CSDA, the California Special Districts Association, uh, conferences generally have tons of different types of districts. So not only is it like fire, water, sewer, mosquito, but a lot of the districts that are there are just really big. And so, um, some of the problems that they have are just really different from what we have. So it was really nice to be around all same districts and around a lot of other districts that were of similar size. And of course, everyone's having staffing issues, uh, and also many of them are, are having, uh, issues with their facilities, uh, being, getting older and whatnot. So in terms of benefits of attendance, I think that, uh, attending the conference was very helpful. One for exposure, because, uh, you know, there's a lot of things that, that we may not think about or know about unless we've seen it before, right? And, uh, and so it's nice to go to these to see what other people are doing, how they do it. Uh, and be able to kind of get out of our, you know, little Rancho bubble and see maybe a wider, wider world of, uh, parks and recreation. Networking was also very helpful. Uh, they have posted several, uh, GM, General Manager Roundtables. Uh, where, you know, each General Manager could bring up something and, and get some advice from, uh, other General Managers. Uh, and so that's also very helpful, because then if there's any issues that we're running into, we can seek help from a larger, uh, group. And actually, this roundtable occurs via Zoom. Um, every, I think every month or two as well, so that's also very helpful as well. And of course, the formal sessions are quite good. Um, this one, they had a, uh, Aging Facilities presentation by some architects, and it was. Amazing, because this is something that we're looking at doing right now. So that was, that was really helpful. Um, some of the other opportunities came from vendors, so not so much from the formal training and not so much from the other, um, from the other park districts. But, um, some of the vendors there, um, there is something called a local government investment pool, an LGIP. Right now, when, uh, tax dollars are collected, they stay with the county and the county's commingled pool. Investment pool, right? So this, uh, it, it invests in very conservative, uh, short-term treasuries and very safe things like that. Um, but it's not the only one out there. Uh, there's also a state-run one, and also, uh, one that's run by JPA called, uh, CalTrust. So that's something to look into a little bit, I think. Especially with inflation running really high every little bit counts, and we do have slightly over one million dollars in, um, in reserves. And so having that, uh, earn just a little bit more interest would be significant. Um, the other thing to look into, of course, is, uh, the insurance. Uh, so right now, we're looking into the California Association for Park and Recreation Indemnity, Indemnity, uh, insurance. And this one, uh, specifically, we're looking into workers' compensation. Um, so right now, state fund, it's, uh, kind of a insurer of last resort for firefighters, police and, and other things. And so, uh, Capri, um, is parks and recreation only, so we're hoping that that might aim, uh, lower premiums. Another, uh, organization that, uh, we heard about in the GM Roundtable is, uh, CPRS. Uh, this is the California Parks and Recreation Society, uh, very low-cost membership, uh, but one of the things that they. Uh, that I heard that they have is a sample RFP selection. And so this would be really helpful for us, because, uh, you know, parks and recreation, we're probably getting RFPs for a lot of the same things. And so this would be helpful to find, you know, the, some samples that we can start off with, and it, it really reduces the amount of work we have to do on an RFP. Also, to give you an idea, the RFP that we started with, uh, for the Site Master Plan, it started off as a hundred pages long. So it's kind of a long document, and so having something that's already well-suited for it, uh, including the right size district, um, that's pretty helpful. So, um, that's something to look into. Um, and then the last thing to, that was very interesting, uh, was that there's actually something called Rec Camp. And this is a unique, kind of like a conference, but it's basically a tour of state-of-the-art recreation facilities. And so this is something that's really neat, because then you can take a look at what other. Neat, because then you can take a look at what other people have and reimagine what's possible. Uh, it's and this is really important when you're looking at um. At what to do with an aging facility because. I guess they put it really well uh in in the training, which is that. If you repair a nineteen-sixties-style. Recreation facility all the way, then you'll have a new nineteen-sixties-style recreation center. Right? And so it's important to see what twenty-twenty recreation looks like, so that when you renovate or repair. That you can make a space that's really appropriate for what people do today. Uh, not how how they did things. Well, for us, it would be the nineteen-nineties, which is when our facility was built. And things have changed quite a bit, even the way we work uh is very different from the way we worked back then, so um. Making facilities with that in mind, some of the the ideas that they actually came up with, which I agree with, are that. Um, facilities these days are are created in such a way where you can have less staff supervise more area. Uh, and that's really important because staffing is our number one uh expense. So in any case, uh rec camp. Dot com, I think is what it's called, something like that. There's a hyphen there, but take a look at it. It's something uh to think about when it comes time to do really major renovations. Um, and anyway, that's my report. Does anyone have any questions about the C R P D uh conference? No. Awesome, well, that's that.
Did Jay, was it Jay also able to attend?
Jay was able to attend. Um, I think this this one was probably not as helpful for him. I think the CPRS would be really good. Uh, the the CPRS also has a conference, and I'm told that they have um. Vendors that sell like equipment and uh different programming things, and I think that would be much more helpful for him.
Thank you.
Okay, great. If there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and move on to five C.
All right, site master planning. Okay, so um we. Were uh working with. A consultant who's working pro bono. Uh, and that kind of limited how many hours this person could put in. We started falling behind and eventually the consultant had to pull out for personal reasons. Um, so I reassigned the project. Uh, county council was able to step in and help us a little bit more with the RFP. And was able to identify an alternative to just going through the RFP process. Um, and so what I wanted to update the board about was this alternative. So um in an RFP process, what you're really looking for is to have a nice public transparent process where the most. You know, qualified candidates can show their stuff, and then uh we can choose the one with the best price and the most qualifications. And in theory, this is always great. The problem is there's a lot of costs associated with even creating an RFP with evaluating the proposals that come in. Um, and so there are costs associated with that. In any case, um, so what county council has um come up with is that we can, what we can do, it's called piggybacking on the county contracts, right? So the county has already done this RFP process. They've already. Found architects um doing a competitive bidding process. They've evaluated them, and so. What piggybacking is, is saying, look. The county's already done all of this process. They've found the most qualified consultants for the cheapest price. And so what we'll do then is we'll piggyback on their process. Make a separate contract with that architect. Under the same terms as the county. Does that make sense? Do they have any questions about that? And so it it's able to satisfy, you know, this this. Complex legal process for getting an architect. Um, so. In terms of going through the RFP process, again, we're talking about cost. It's also taking time. And then um there's also no guarantees that anyone will give us a proposal, which means that all that cost and time is wasted, and then we have to do it again. The piggyback process uh eliminates a lot of the cost and uh shortens the process quite a bit. And of course, we'll get. You know, an architect that's uh thoroughly vetted. And of course, if none of the firms are interested, we still have the option to go through the RFP process. Uh, so one thing, yes. Uh, you're on mute, Steve.
Sorry. Do we have uh, do we know already that the county has already hired architects uh of the same type and experience that we're looking for?
Um, that is something that our their contracts person is looking into right now. Uh, so they, apparently they go through this process quite often. And they actually uh. Do RFPs for architects without any specific project in mind, which kind of blows my mind, but that's how they do it. So um and apparently there's multiple architects, uh not, it's like a handful of them, so so there should be one that's appropriate.
Yeah, and and legal is the one who said, uh, the uh uh legal people have suggested it, so they already believe it's legal. You know, so, okay.
Yeah, well, so then that's what I was gonna get to as well, is that um the piggyback process is expressly allowed in some circumstances. This is not one of them, so. But it's also not expressly not allowed. So um what that means is that it kind of exists in this legal gray area. Um, and typically, when there's a gray area like this, uh the local government kind of gets to decide how to go about doing it. It, this, I'm told, is a very low-risk um option. And that even if something does arise, there's a lot of great reasons why the district has chosen to pursue this option. Um, namely that it saves on costs and it fulfills the same requirements otherwise, so. I did mention that there's a very complex set of laws around this, so uh but county councils uh fairly confident that this is um that this is okay.
Okay.
So at the end of this, uh if we can get this contract through the piggybacking process. At the the very last step is exactly the same as if we did an RFP. That contract will come before the Rancho Board of Directors for final review and approval. So either way, uh there's the same oversight as with the RFP process. Director Bajash, did you raise your hand? I I couldn't quite. No, okay. Um, so that's the update. Um, we're going to try the uh piggyback process unless there's some terrible concerns. And then uh that contract will likely come before the board, uh hopefully in July. And then we'll go from there.
Yeah, awesome. Well, thank you for the updates, Kevin. Um, with that, we can go ahead and move on to adjournment. I forgot what the word was for emotion where it the opposite of roll call. Does it go by extension? No.
If there's no objections.
Yeah, if there's no objections, we'll go ahead and adjourn at seven oh nine. Um, I'm assuming there are none, but yeah. Great meeting, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.